I'd like to call the order, the October 8th, 2024 meeting, which stands for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Gary, would you lead us, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can be seated. Except for you, Gary. I'll tell you what's happened. So I guess we'll call this part two. For those who don't know, I had the pleasure of reading this proclamation to Gary at a surprise party a couple of weeks ago. And now we're going to make it official tonight. First, I just want to say thank you. Fifty years of service is an incredible, incredible achievement, both professionally and your part of being a volunteer for our town. I want to thank your wife Kathy, your children. I can only imagine all the times that you've had to run out from dinner and be late for parties, holidays, just to answer the calls. So without your family's support for you to do all this, I think it would probably be pretty impossible. So thank you Kathy very, very much.
Thank you.
Really? All right. Whereas Gary Peterson has served for the town of Farmington as a firefighter for fifty years, starting as a volunteer firefighter at the East Farmington Volunteer Fire Department in 1974. And whereas Gary is a lifelong Farmington resident, raised his son Christopher, daughter Melissa, and his wife of forty-eight years Kathy, and is a devoted grandfather to Adriana, Emma, Navith, and Stella. Whereas Gary became a career fighter fighter on June 18th, 1984, served honorably as a career fighter fighter until his retirement on December 31st, 2015. And after retirement from the town, he continues to serve as a Farmington community as a volunteer fighter fighter. And whereas Gary has served as an emergency medical technician for thirty-six years, and is a certified fire inspector, a fire investigator for the state of Connecticut for the past thirty-six years. And whereas Gary Peterson rose through the ranks, since joining the East Farmington Volunteer Fire Department, and served in the capacity of treasurer, second lieutenant, captain, deputy chief, assistant chief, and elevated to chief. And whereas Gary is honored for his accomplishments by being named East Farmington Fire Department Firefighter of the Year in 1987 and 2015, Town Firefighter of the Year 2016, named East Farmington Volunteer Fire Department EMT of the Year 1992, '94, 2016, and 2018. And whereas Gary traces his lineage through generations of firefighters with his grandfather Hans Peterson, who was the founding father of the East Farmington Volunteer Fire Department, and worked with his father Chief Richard Peterson and Uncle Chief Robert Peterson. And whereas Gary is focused on the public good and acted to protect the public interest while donating countless hours of time, energy, and personal commitment to better the community and enrich the lives of the residents of the town of Farmington. Now therefore, the town Farmington Council hereby commends Gary Peterson for his fifty years of service to the Farmington Fire Department on behalf of the community, and we hereby thank him for his immeasurable contribution, unwavering dedication to the town of Farmington and its residents. Dated today, October 8th, 2024. The Zamboni stuff had to stay at the firehouse. Kathy warned me to keep it, you know, short and sweet this time. And also, you received this from our state representatives. I won't read it because it's crazy handwriting, but you did receive this too from our state delegation. So thank you very much for everything.
Thank you.
And the prize of all prizes, the hat. Thank you very much. Do you want to say anything?
I just want to say thank you to everybody in the council for this proclamation. It's been a great fifty years as a firefighter and thirty-one years as a paid firefighter and working for the town totally for about forty years. So it's been a great time and hope to continue many years as a volunteer. Thank you.
All right. Continue on with our meeting. If you guys want to leave, you're more than welcome to do so. And thank you, everybody, for your service. All right. Dee.
Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 8th, 2024 at 7:05 PM in town council chambers to repeal and replace Chapter 165 Solid Waste Article 4, Central Connecticut Solid Waste Authority of the Farmington Code.
So we have Robin here from CROG, who's going to go through the public hearing for us.
They left Gary high and dry.
Good evening and thank you. My name is Robin Nichols. I am a principal program manager at the CROG. If you're not familiar with CROG, as many of you are already, it's a capital region council of governments. And I work with them and am in charge of their waste management and diversion programming and services. So I am here to present some background information about the CSWA, our regional waste authority, and ask the council to approve a resolution related to that. So I do have a few slides, and I think Kat's going to help me through those, and I believe they're in your packet as well. So the Central Connecticut Solid Waste Authority, CSWA as we call it, was formed in 2010 by a state statute, the Connecticut General Statute. It allows any two municipal entities to get together and form a regional waste authority. Back in 2010, about fourteen entities formed, well, I want to say maybe twelve at that point in time, got together and formed the Central Connecticut Solid Waste Authority. As of now, we have fourteen different entities, municipal entities that are members, Farmington being one of them, and Farmington is also not only one of the founding members of the Regional Waste Authority, but they are also serving as an officer in the Regional Waste Authority. Russ Arnold is serving as our treasurer. So that's a little bit of background here. There is an agreement that allows CROG to act as your administrator. So right now, CSWA does not have any staff. I act as the staff to support the Regional Waste Authority activities that are administrative in nature. So I think we can go to the next slide. So we had gone on a brief hiatus because of the pandemic, which I think a lot of entities had. We came back fairly strong in 2023, got back together with the original fourteen active members, and we decided at that point in time to take on some of the rather, I want to say, onerous operational items that we had that were set up in 2010. So when we got back together in 2023, we looked at the bylaws, and we decided that it probably is best to simplify those. As of now, every time a change has to be made to the bylaws, your ordinance pretty much mirrors the bylaws. So a simple change in the bylaws could then have you come, you know, have somebody come before the council and make a change to, by resolution, to change that each time. So we had gotten together and decided to simplify the bylaws and codify those simplifications so that they do mirror the resolution that I have put forward, but that we can then act without having to engage you every single time we want to make a simple operational change in the bylaws. Right now, the Regional Waste Authority, you could probably move to the next one. The Regional Waste Authority serves many purposes. We are here to help you and your public works departments and your sustainability or environmental planners, help them with waste management and diversion activities. That could include anything from helping you review hauler contracts or negotiate those, organize events related to collections, bid in a shared services type of manner for, you know, to get scale on some of the programs and services that we have. And right now, we're actually helping with a grant that we had received from the state of Connecticut for over $500,000 we have received right now to do Regional Waste Authority expansion of services, activities, and especially education outreach, which is really important to kind of help get the message across as to like, what is recyclable? What isn't? You know, how do we divert items from the solid waste, you know, waste stream is a good way to put it. So that's a lot of the activities that we do. And we're, you know, open to help your particular communities with, you know, whatever you might need related to waste management and diversion. So the major changes that we have to simplify them is we simplified the membership and the voting. The voting right before used to be a five-tiered system. So with only fourteen members, we had, it was quite complicated on how the voting system was set up with, based on, it was a population and an overall population share percentage, and it was quite complicated when it came to voting. Right now, we're simplifying it to have a static amount for three tiers. Under 24,999 would be tier one, tier two, up to 49,999, and then over 50,000. And that's your population in your town. It actually gives members such as like a town like Farmington a little more voting power instead of getting it watered down by like, say, the highest tier, which the only member that we have as the highest tier right now based on population and tonnage is the city of Hartford. So you could see, we wanted to make sure that all the towns that participate, even towns very smaller, such as like a, we have Bolton is one of our members, and they have only a few thousand residents. They wanted to make sure that they actually have, you know, a say in what's going on. So that's a reason why we've changed out. We also have limited some of the rotations. We had like, you know, rotating on and off three different levels. You know, like I said, with fourteen different members, it's a little onerous to have all of that operational, all those operations going on when you only have that many members to choose from because most likely you're going to run out of people to serve in those positions at that point in time until we grow, which is what we're looking to do in the future. So we're asking, I think you could probably move to the next one. So we're basically asking for the amendment to be passed. You have, in order for us to enact the new bylaws, every single one of the fourteen different CSWA members then has to repeal and then pass this new resolution. The majority of the towns have already done that, and I'm meeting with each town individually to make sure that if they have any questions, that I can explain that. So all fourteen members are in agreement and are moving forward with this process. And we are looking for the council's approval to repeal the bylaws and pass the new enabling ordinance.
All right. So we'll start with anybody inside the chambers who would like to ask any questions. Anybody on Zoom have their hand up?
I do not see any hands raised.
Nobody wants to talk about trash. Close the public hearing.
All right. Definitely have no comments from the public. We will close the public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
We'll move over to E, which is Noethen. We'll go to F now, regular public comment. Anybody in chambers who would like to make a public comment? And is there anybody online who wishes to make a public comment? Please raise your hand.
No hands.
No hands? All right. We will move on to G.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the September 24th, 2024 regular town council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. As you can see, the listed corrections we have. Does anybody else have any thing?
And then, I'm just working backwards to make sure everybody's paying attention. Make a motion to accept the minutes of the September 10th, 2024 town council meeting with the below changes noted.
Thank you.
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Anybody else have any changes that need to be corrected? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Reading of communications?
None.
None? All right. Reports of the committees, 1928. We are, we had a couple of meetings that went by, but nothing new as of now. We're still waiting for Biz to come in and to start reviewing all the estimates. Bicycle Authority.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we have a couple of things going on. I do know that we will be installing a new water fountain relatively soon. I think sometime after the leaves have been picked up, it should be installed and ready for next season in the spring. So we will have a water fountain on the Rails to Trails, which will be nice. Also, we're updating our website, so that will be effective. We'll be working with the town to update the webpages. And we're excited about the fact that our, that we're working on the cup handle to expand our access to West Hartford, to the UConn Medical Center. And I know that we'll be working on that with the town, so.
Where's the location of the water fountain going to be?
Where exactly is that water fountain going to be?
I think it's on Oak Ridge, correct?
Yeah, it's on Oak Ridge.
Water fountain?
Water fountain.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Russ.
Farmington High School Building Committee.
Sure. Our last meeting was September 18th. At that time, we confirmed that the Black Box Theater had been completed. Since then, the auditorium was turned over on September 23rd. We're seventy-seven percent complete with our punch list, and we're continuing to move forward on budget. Our next meeting is October 16th at 5:00 PM. Will that be in the library at the high school? So that'll be fun. We'll get to be in the new library for our meeting. And then, of course, we have the open house on Saturday, October 26th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And I think we're going to have more information coming about that and how to register. Is that right? Okay.
It should be in mailboxes this week in the town newsletter.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Green Efforts.
At the last meeting, we were talking about items to maybe include in the fall newsletters as far as recycling and mostly just reminders on recycling and maybe some other information to get in, out to the public just as reminders, like I said. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. And for Land Acquisition Committee, there's nothing new to report. We'll move over to Report of the Chair and Liaisons. As we know, we are all in October, so happy October, everybody. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so please take a moment and do a little research to see if you qualify for free screening. Also, this month is Domestic Violence Awareness. One out of four women and one out of seven men will be a victim of domestic violence. We have many support groups out there, not only in Farmington, but online and throughout our community. So if you do need help, please reach out. This Saturday, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, at 321 New Britton Avenue is the Second Annual Fall Craft Fair at the Farmington Senior Center. The week of October 14th through the 18th is bulk pickup. You can go to the Town of Farmington's Facebook page and see what are the acceptable and unacceptable items that would be picked up. Early voting starts October 21st and runs through November 3rd at the Town Hall Pavilion. Again, please go to the website and you can see the hours of operation. And as always, please check Farmington Explorer to see all your week's activities throughout town. And finally, today, now with myself, Amy, Dave, our Farmington delegation, and some Board of Ed and our registrar voters, we went to the Westwoods Elementary School, where the grade six students have been learning all about the United States Constitution and social studies. In addition to learning about the history of the founding document, they are also studying its structure and function. They are exploring the rights it protects and the responsibilities of living in a representative democracy. To engage in the 2024 election, students participated in an "I Voted" sticker contest in collaboration with the Farmington Registrar voters that learned about the role of our local registrars and the election process. Students designed stickers to promote civic pride on Election Day. Each homeroom held an election to select a semifinalist stickers. The elected town and state officials represented Farmington served on the judging panel and selected one sticker to be printed and distributed on Election Day to all Farmington polling places. The semifinalist designs will also be posted throughout the polling stations on Election Day. And later this month, the students will be visiting the Connecticut Old State House and the Connecticut Building to learn more about state government. And I hope you guys all enjoy. The kids were really, really talented in their creations of the stickers, and it was a pleasure to be a part of that process.
I would say the same thing. I think the winning sticker is going to be very, very popular, you know, on Election Day.
I'm sure it is. It was great. All right. We'll move on to Board of Liaison, Board of Education.
Board of Education met September 16th. There was a very long presentation from Specialty Transportation, speaking to the issues with the transportation earlier this year, earlier in the school year, so last month. And hopefully, we're working through that process. They did, the superintendent did state in response to a question that they are reviewing the contract with Specialty Transportation for the purposes of evaluating the rights that the Board, that the Board of Education has in order to get restitution for the issues that happened and the delays and everything else. There was also discussion of the opening of new FHS, which Sarah already covered. But one thing I found interesting is that there were over 1,000 items of equipment and furniture from old FHS that was moved throughout the district to other schools and the new high school with a savings, not a savings, but over $100,000 worth of furniture and equipment. So ultimately, a savings to the town and the district for, because those items don't have to be purchased or acquired. And the board appointed Veronica Ruchek as the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction effective January 1 to replace Kim Nguyen, who is retiring. And the next meeting will be October 21st at FHS.
Thank you very much. Inlands and Wetlands.
Unfortunately, I was traveling during their last meeting, and I haven't had a chance to check in with the chair. So nothing to report right now.
Thank you. EDC.
I have nothing to report. Our meeting was canceled for tomorrow, but I will report on the next time.
All right. Thank you. Historic District of Farmington.
Thank you. We've had a flurry of activity. A lot of applications came through, all of which were approved, so there's a lot going on in the district. Also, we're looking forward to the possibility of expanding the district, which we'll be talking about tonight. And that's what I got. So our next meeting, our next meeting, this month's meeting has been canceled. Our next meeting will be November 19.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Human Relations.
Sorry. My apologies. So the Human Relations Commission had the next, sorry, the last meeting was in August, and we'll be meeting again later this month. There have been discussions on how the, sorry, how the commission wants to move forward, what the topics of interest that the commission is interested in, because we can't do it all. It's essentially what they're, what they're recognizing. And also, searching for other committee, other commission members as folks. And I think we've appointed everyone now.
Yes, we show a full slate.
So, and then there was a not, a casual meeting between the Human Relations Commission and the Racial Equality Task Force, which I know you attended, Joe, to try to evaluate how those two groups can work together or should mesh or exactly what should happen in the future. And there's been no resolution on that yet, but it's in discussion.
All right. Thank you. Library.
Library Board met September 18th. Couple of things of note, over the summer, since they, I haven't reported since then, over 800 children participated in the summer reading program, close to 100 adults, another 100 teens. So they did very well over there with that. Beyond that, the meeting discussed the ongoing maintenance issues at the library they've had for a while, including roof, HVAC, electrical, and water infiltration. The library will be closed this Monday for Columbus Indigenous People Day slash, sorry. And then the next meeting of the Library Board will be Wednesday, the 16th.
Thank you. TPZ.
The Town Planning and Zoning Commission met last night, October 7th. Couple noteworthy items. One, I think, you know, there's been a lot of investment in the town at a number of properties. So a lot of applications that they see now are signage applications because obviously people, after they put in their investment, are looking to basically make sure, call attention to their address, their business name, so forth and so on. So I think they do a good job. Staff does a great job in evaluating these applications, making sure they meet, you know, the criteria of the audiences. And if changes need to be made or modifications, those things are taken care of. So I think that's one noteworthy item. I think the other one is, everybody's very interested in the abandoned Shell Station that's on Route 6 at Five Corners on the southeast corner. That, that's moving along. There should be some activity there probably November. There's been a little bit of a, little bit, the owners had to, you know, pay their taxes, and there's some, one tax goes to one municipality, one tax goes to another municipality. They kind of caught that. It's been rectified. And so they're getting their paperwork in order, and the approval should be coming along so that we can, you know, that project can actively start with demolition and get into that. So people will see activity in that very shortly.
Yeah, people have been, you know, obviously talking about it for a while, so hopefully we'll see some movement there. Thank you. Unionville Historic District.
The Unionville Historic District had a walk, a public walk on the last weekend in September, where they went and viewed some of the historic homes along Main Street. And we have a meeting tomorrow night. So I'll have more information on that.
All right. Thank you. Unionville Village Improvement Association.
I don't think we have a report on that one.
No report. All right. And the Water Pollution Control Authority.
We had, there was a meeting on September 11th after a short summer recess, where we reviewed a variety of items. A variety of repairs and upgrades were made throughout the summer. Operations continued to run smoothly. The next meeting is tomorrow, Wednesday at 7:00 PM.
Excellent. Thank you. We'll move on to CAPE. Report of the Town Manager.
You have the written report in your packets, but just a couple of things to note. Veterans Day, a brief public ceremony will be held at the Farmington Town Hall, one Monteith Drive in front of the Veterans Memorial Monument at 11:00 AM on Monday, November 11th. So any questions regarding the ceremony should be directed to Paul Kraus. I think it was mentioned, we do have bulk waste collection. The next townwide bulk waste collection will begin Monday, October 14th, and will be picked up during your normal collection dates during the week of October 14th through October 18th. We also have Household Hazardous Waste Electronic Recycling and Shredding Day. We work with Avon, Canton, Granby, Simsbury, and Suffield, and that's going to be on October 19th from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. All Farmington residents can bring household hazardous waste electronics for recycling and up to two boxes of personal documents for shredding to the Simsbury Public Works Facility located at 66 Town Forest Road in Simsbury. It's a very popular program. I just gave a quick update on community service update. Nancy Perrin, our director, was, has been working with some various organizations, and this is just an update. Farmington High School Open House, I think we've mentioned that, is Saturday, October 26th from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And also, just a reminder to the council that our next meeting, October 22nd, is going to take place at Miss Porter School at 5:30 PM.
Excellent. Any questions?
Make a motion to accept the Town Manager's report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion passes. We'll go on to L.
Item L. 2, I make a motion that Jagesh Shah be appointed to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Shah.
Sorry.
That's good. Be appointed to the Board of Assessment Appeals for the balance of a six-year term beginning immediately and ending January 2030.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Jagesh will be replaced in Rich Higley, who is, was a member for a long time and a longtime Farmington resident who is moving up north. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I make a motion that James Calciano be reappointed to the Farmington Historic District Commission for a five-year term beginning October 1st, 2024, and ending in September 30th, 2029.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I make a second motion that Elizabeth Gemski be appointed to the Farmington Historic District Commission as an alternate for a five-year term beginning October 1st, 2024, and ending September 30th, 2029.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
L. 7, I make a motion that Harry Pirtle be appointed to the Farmington Historic District Commission as an alternate for a five-year term beginning October 1st, 2024, ending September 30th, 2029.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
L. 8, I make a motion that Ted Sanford be reappointed to the Farmington Historic District Commission as an alternate for a five-year term beginning October 1st, 2024, ending September 30th, 2029.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
L. 10, I make a motion that Andre Simmons be appointed to Land Acquisition Committee beginning immediately for an indefinite term.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
L. 15, I make a motion to modify L. 15 from the September 10th, 2024 meeting to read the following, that Kelly Schadler be appointed to the Unionville Historic District and Properties Commission as an alternate for a three-year term beginning October 1st, 2024, and ending September 30th, 2027.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. As you can read, we just made a mistake. We said a five-year term at the last meeting. It's supposed to be a three-year term. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, any old business? We'll go on to new business.
N. 1, I make a motion to approve the attached resolution adopting amended bylaws and enabling ordinance of the Central Connecticut Solid Waste Authority, replacing Chapter 165 Solid Waste, Article 4, Central Connecticut Solid Waste Authority of the Farmington Town Code.
Second.
Motion and a second. Kathy.
So we had Robyn speak. We have both Robyn and Russ here if you have any questions, but we are recommending that we do, I guess, repeal the past ordinance and replace it with this resolution.
All right, we'll open up to questions. Sarah.
I don't have any questions.
All right.
I don't have any questions.
No questions.
Keith.
No questions.
Amy.
No questions.
Dave.
No questions.
Okay, looks like we're all unanimous here. So do we need to read the new?
Nope, all in favor?
Nope, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Robyn, thank you very much for coming out. Appreciate your time.
N. 2, I make a motion to set a public hearing at 7:05 on November 12th, 2024, in the Town Council chambers to amend the Farmington Town Code, Chapter 111, Historic Areas, Article 1, Historic District, Historic Properties, 111-3, Organization of Commission.
Second.
Motion and a second. Kathy.
Approval of this motion will rectify the current rotation of membership terms on the Farmington Historic District Commission. It came to our attention that two members of the Farmington Historic District Commission have terms expiring on September 30th, 2024. Per the town ordinance, five-year terms of the Farmington Historic District Commission should be staggered so that only one member's term expires each year. The town clerk has searched their records and is not able to determine when or how this error occurred. We reached out to our attorney, and he provided the attached legal opinion regarding this matter, which states that the town ordinance should be modified to grant the Town Council the authority to appoint members for terms shorter than the standard five years in order to correct the rotation of terms. So it is a long about process, but this is what we had been advised to do. The change is in red, that we would put that in, and then, and once this ordinance is approved, we would then set a next historic district for a one year, it won't be fully one year. It's, I think it's about 10 months, and then they will be on the rotation again, and then everyone will be five years staggered.
Correct. Anybody have questions? Sarah.
No questions.
Patty? Brian? Dave?
No questions.
Amy?
No question.
Keith?
Sir.
Awesome. All right, and I did talk to everybody, and I did speak to staff, and with that one person missing, we'll still be able to hold our meetings and conduct business as usual. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Hang on, I gotta get, okay, are we on N. 5 or did I miss?
N. 4. Three. Three.
Oh, I was there too, man. N. 3, to appoint the members of the Farmington Historic District Commission as the Farmington Historic Study Committee.
Second.
Motion and a second. Kathy.
The Farmington Historic District and Properties Commission has requested that the Town Council appoint their body as the Historic District and Property Studies Committee for the purpose of creating new historic districts, expanding existing historic districts, and/or design, designating new historic properties within Farmington. Once these additional properties have been identified and nominated for designation, the list will be submitted for endorsement and approval by the TPZ as well as the Town Council. In addition, property owners are given the opportunity to vote for the inclusion within a historic district, and you can see that we got a memo from Shannon, Shannon, our town planner, on this.
Yes. And this is business as usual, and as we've done this before.
Yep, it's, there's currently one property owner that has expressed an interest in having their property added to the Farmington Historic District. The first step in the process is to have the Town Council appoint the study committee. The study committee will then be comprised of the same members currently serving on the historic, Farmington Historic District, and that's the first step.
All right. Anything else, Brian?
It says it all.
Good. Patty?
I have a question. So in terms of the members, John Run, we just replaced John Runahan tonight, right?
Yes.
And Jay Bumbara, his term is expired at the end of September?
Mm-hmm.
And he's the one that we're waiting for the amendment on the ordinance?
Correct.
Right? So how does that impact how we're appointing the committee, given that the members are?
As you see in the, in the motion, we did it as the Historic District Commission. We didn't give names.
Okay. Yep. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
N. 4, to adopt the attached resolution to include the Town of Farmington in the Federal Highlands Region.
Second.
Motion and a second. Kathy.
The Conservation Commission unanimously voted to forward a positive referral to the Town Council in support of adding the Town of Farmington to the Highlands Region at their September 4th meeting. Inclusion in the Highlands Region would qualify the Town of Farmington for financial and technical assistance provided by the U.S. Congress. And you can read the rest of the note, but I think this is a good thing, the, this actually came through, the land trust had suggested this to me, and then we forwarded it to Shannon and the Conservation Commission. So I think it's in general, it gives us opportunities for various funding sources at really no cost or harm to us, and it puts us in this, into this, what is it called? Into, in the, not, in the commission.
Commission.